Good morning, everyone. It is March 29, 2022. It's 9:00 AM by our clock. We're in the Ringling Boulevard County Administration Center in our chambers. We have a couple of things that I'm going to have to speak to as we progress through the meeting. All good. Everybody who wants to speak will get a chance to speak. But we're going to start if you are able to rise. Carolyn Eastwood is going to help us with the invocation. And today, a change. The vice chairman is going to help us with the pledge, usually the honor of Commissioner Ziegler.
Good morning. May the Board of County Commissioners find strength, wisdom, and guidance in their deliberations that affect the lives of each of the citizens of our community. Amen.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Ziegler, for suggesting that we have veterans lead us in the pledge. Today, we have a very special guest, former Sergeant Eugene Tomaszowski. He is the past commander of the Ukrainian Americans Post Forty. Post Forty was named for the fortieth anniversary of Northport's post, and he is the current vice chairman of that post. He is a Vietnam-era veteran who served from 1966 to 1968. He has the national, he received the National Defense Service Medal, the Good Conduct Medal, the Expert Rifle Medal, and, of course, was honorably discharged, and his specialty was as an automatic weapons expert. He is currently active in providing and collecting funds for the defense of Ukraine. And we just think it's especially appropriate that you lead us in the pledge today. Thank you for coming up and leading us in the pledge. If you will, please, sir, lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service.
Good job. Okay, as we work our way through the agenda, first of all, the people with the signs are adhering perfectly to our sign protocol, which is you can have a sign, as long as it's not on a stick. Pole, two-by-four, the flag that's being held back there is a different matter. But we're going to have a lot of ins and outs. So would you, the two folks furthest to the right of the room, my left, just move over to wall space on the other side? This way, people can move in and out a lot easier. Perfect. And that is, by the way, our written protocol on signs. And the signs have to be handheld like they are. You're all doing a great job. And they can't block anyone's view. So big signs standing against the back wall is absolutely perfect. Okay, I'm going to take a point of privilege here today, and we're going to change things up a little bit. I'll ask the indulgence of the county commissioners. And it's something that we don't usually do, and we are going to do today. We're going to talk about the information that's out there, and I'm going to also ask the commissioners to have a lot of comments about this. They may choose to, they may not choose to. To start with, I need to adhere to my notes. I'm going to ask the commissioners, and you all, for a moment of silence for the 10 million people that have been relocated and the thousands, including babies that have been murdered in Ukraine. Let me give you a couple of pieces of information to fill in perhaps some of the blanks that you all, in the information that's out there. The county does not currently have an agreement with Rumble. The county commissioner or staff knew the exact name of the company when the item was heard by the BCC as crazy, ridiculous, you might say, as that sounds. It's state law, and I pushed back, other commissioners pushed back furiously in years past. But that's because a lot of companies that wanted to locate here were losing employees. I don't want to move to Florida, or I'm not going there, or my kids are in high school yet. So state law, there's, I tried. The referral of this so-named Project Sunshine was prior to Russia invading Ukraine. The item, the agenda item, was heard on October 26. Now, where we are right now, and this is where the commissioners are going to have to interact if they so choose, there is no agreement. We are waiting for a contract to come back to us that any pay-for-performance contract has demonstrated documented residency in three counties. There is no giving anyone $825,000 in a lump. That was changed years ago at the insistence of this board that you will be paid a modest amount of money, it's usually $5,000, which is an amount of money, probably shouldn't use the word modest, for an employee that comes and stays, depending on the contract, five to nine years, and you're given that money in yearly increments. With that said, we were waiting for that to see if it even happened, the parameters of that contract, before it was put on the agenda. And I decided to not put it under my commission comments, and I bet other commissioners have, because we still were not at that point. Now, with that said, and again, no matter what gets said here, I hope you give us the courtesy that we're going to give you. I've got 21 speaker cards on all sorts of subjects this morning. You can read the agenda, which spells out no duplicate speaking, same person doesn't speak on the same subject twice. Also, on items not on the agenda, we limit it to five people now, and the rest at the end of the day. That sort of puts me in the quandary, because I just brought this up and verbally put it on the agenda. So we're going to take as many people who still will want to speak after we're done here. With that said, I'm going to, and you'll always see me leaning over, it's not because I'm getting sleepy, but there's an extra iPad, in addition to my iPad and laptop, for commissioners as they line up to speak. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Dieter.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm just wondering about our process and where do we go from here? Would you like the Board to deal with that issue before all the speakers, and then if they still want to speak? They're certainly allowed to?
Well, first of all, no matter what we say or do or vote on here now, anybody that wants to speak is going to speak. We prove that. This is, this is the Board of County Commissioners of Sarasota County. We have had this room filled in the third and fourth quarter, and at many other times of last year. And I promised everyone then, because they were speaking on a public hearing, five minutes. Today, I'm promising three minutes, so long as the entire agenda doesn't get dislodged. Some of them may have to speak at the end of the day. I am hoping for a vigorous discussion, and the chair will accept any sort of motion that's proffered.
And did you want to have that discussion now or later?
Well, ordinarily, I would say we need to have, I'd like to see if someone is prepared, Commissioner Dieter or someone else. Commissioner Dieter is recognized. If you would like to make a motion for or against this contract, I would ask you to do that now, and then I'll ask for a second.
Okay. Thank you for outlining where we stand. There's been a lot of misinformation out there, mainly in the newspaper that we all read, about the anonymity of the, you know, why would you vote on a project that you don't know that project? Frankly, I helped write that law. These companies wanted to be anonymous permanently, and we did not allow that. And my legislation at the time said, once you take a penny of taxpayer dollars, then we have to know who you are and do due diligence. So where we stand right now, we have no contract. We had directed the, our staff, to pursue the job aspect, and frankly, they did that, and there's no contract as of right now. What I'd like to state is that it's the wrong project, mainly due to remote workers and other issues. We can't prove who you hired and where they live and how much they make. And this is a back-end payment, so you would have gotten paid by who you hired. So far, they've hired no one because we have no contract. So we've got the wrong project at the wrong time with the war that's going on. The flag in the back, I think, brings a tear to everyone's eye. This country is 100% united behind Ukraine, and it's one thing that's united us all, which is a pleasure. And this project is also in the wrong community. Historically, those of you in North County don't probably even know this, but for 40 years or longer, we've had a very large Ukraine population in Northport and a big church that handles the Ukrainians. They've been great citizens of Sarasota County decade after decade. We're thrilled to have them. So it's the wrong project, the wrong time, the wrong community. So I will make the motion that just instructs the staff to no longer pursue a contract with Rumble.
Okay, no, no, no.
We don't clap.
No, we don't clap, we don't cheer. This isn't a high school pep rally. Please, please, please help me with that, because we have to keep a real, clear record. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Dieter. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Dieter, second by Commissioner Cutzinger. Commissioner Dieter, you go first if there's anything you'd like to add. Commissioner Cutzinger, you go next as the second there.
No, I will give my time to Commissioner Cutzinger.
I agree with what you said there. It's great to see the Ukrainian support here this morning.
Your mic.
Your mic's not on. I agree. It's great to see the Ukrainian support here this morning. Again, thank you, sir, for coming and leading us in the pledge. I think all of us are just horrified by what we see happening over there. And any connection with that at all is something I don't want to be a part of, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to speak last. Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion. And I'd like to add that we end the incentive program in Sarasota County, the economic incentive program in Sarasota County.
Okay, that, we have an amendment by Commissioner Ziegler. Do we have a second for that amendment?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would, as the maker of the motion, I would consider that an unfriendly amendment, and it would require a very long discussion and participation of EDC, our public-private partner on that, and, you know.
Well, I would say that the motion that was made today, that actually requires a long discussion and some research, and it is made in response to some public outcry that is frankly based on false reporting, but, and so, but I have a, I have an amendment on the floor looking for a second.
Right, and that's what I was about to say. We're not going to have any discussion now unless and until there's a second for the amendment proffered by Commissioner Ziegler. Is there a second? Yes, Commissioner Moran?
I'll second very much in the interest of discussion on the matter. Full disclosure, I'm not sure how the end will go, but I'm open to a second because I want to hear discussion on this.
Okay, that said, we're going to work on the amendment first, and then that may pass or not pass, but then we'll move to the parent motion. So Commissioner Ziegler, why don't you go first, then Commissioner Moran, then anyone else?
So I'm going to discuss the amendment in a second, but I'm also going to discuss the main motion right now as well, because it's important to lay that out. What's going on in Ukraine is insane. The Russians are obviously not our friends. I think everyone agrees on that, hopefully. I have an individual that I've done a lot of work with in the past that actually lives in Ukraine, and probably every two or three days, I shoot him an email just to, I mean, as sad as it sounds, to make sure the guy's alive. He's a, probably in his late 20s. He does incredible work. He's a developer over there that I've done work with in the past. And the stories I'm getting back from this individual are that he's moving around the country to be safe. And literally, they don't, you know, they're, they're proud of their country for fighting back, but then they're also terrified, because the more gains they make, the more terrified they are that a nuclear weapon or a chemical weapon is going to be used on them to suppress those gains. So it's pretty insulting, some individuals in the crowd here trying to say that any commissioner, but specifically me, is siding with Russia in any way. My father also lives in Serbia. A lot of people don't know that about me, which almost borders Ukraine. I actually am Hungarian, and my family's from Hungary, which actually does border Ukraine. And if that war gets out of hand and starts crossing borders, literally, my dad's side of the family, my brothers, my father, my grandmother, my aunts, my uncles on my father's side, they're at risk. So this is the problem with reporting, and this is the problem with political narratives, that people get involved in issues that they don't fully understand, and they start lobbying attacks at commissioners. There's a gentleman in the back waving his head or whatever. This is the reality, sir. My father lives over there, and I have friends over there. Now, here's what's going on, and this is why I'm a little frustrated, frankly, with the original motion that was made, is we are reacting to the news, and we are reacting to political activists that are pushing this issue. Here's what the news said, and I'll go through it point by point. And I did this with the reporter, but unfortunately, I got a call at 11 that said, hey, call me back. And I wasn't able to get out of meetings and call anyone until 3 o'clock. So 11:00 AM, 3:00 PM, I called the reporter, and I'm told that, hey, at 2 o'clock is our deadline, because we have to print our newspaper on the east coast to ship it to the west coast, which is crazy. I mean, I'm not just sitting around my phone waiting for the Herald Tribune to call me all day, and I called them as soon as I could, and then they run and they print, admittedly by the reporter, false information. So here's what the newspaper said, and I didn't expect this to come up so early, so my notes are kind of spread apart. This would be a lot more eloquent if I could wait, but I guess we're having this motion now. The news said that as technology platforms such as Google, Facebook, and Twitter are blocking RT News, which is the Russian news, Sarasota County voted to give $825,000 to Rumble. Every single part of that claim is false. Removing RT News, which is this Russian news platform, and it's, first of all, it's pretty silly that the county commission's up here dissecting a business and trying to wade in, you know, what business is deserving or not, when I've seen deals fly through for the EDC without any question, when they're in other industries. But I'll get to that in a second. But the first claim that other platforms are deplatforming, what I will share with you, and if you, if you're on Facebook and you have your phone, you can look it up right now, is RT News is on Facebook, 7.4 million followers on Facebook. On Twitter, they have 3 million followers. But yet, I read in the newspaper that those platforms have removed RT News. Both pages are actually verified, so both platforms, Facebook and Twitter, have actually verified those organizations and allowed them to use their platform. Both of them are live. I checked just this morning. This screenshot is from this morning, right here. Both of them are live on those platforms. So the first point, that they're getting deplatformed because they have Russian propaganda, and I guess I would come back and ask the commissioners that use Facebook, I would ask the activists that use Facebook, and I'd also ask the Herald Tribune. By having an account on that platform, are you condoning Russian propaganda? That's the question. If you're on Facebook, are you condoning it because you're on that platform? I would say, no, you're not. That's a silly question. But they turn around, they pin it on the county commission because someone wants to come here and create jobs. So let's now go to the next point, that Sarasota County voted to give $825,000 to Rumble. That's not accurate either. The first part, voted to give any money to quote-unquote "Rumble," that's not true. It was, this is how it's presented to us, and it's presented to us as the EDC, and this is how it works, just so people know, because the Herald Tribune doesn't even understand this. Literally, the Herald Tribune reporter in their reporting, which is what this motion is being motivated from, said that, why didn't the commission talk to each other before the meeting? Well, first of all, that would be breaking the law. That's called sunshine law. We cannot talk to each other before meetings. And the Herald Tribune, in their editorial or their opinion piece or whatever, I mean, pretty much every article's an opinion piece anyway, but in there, they said, why didn't the commission get with each other and talk about this before the meeting and discuss it before they made a decision? Again, that would be against the law, so that's another inaccuracy with that newspaper. But voted to give $825,000 to Rumble. This is how it works. I believe in this case, the state said, we have a company that's looking at moving to Longboat Key. They sent that lead down to the EDC. The EDC, which we've been highly critical, myself included, of the organization in the past, works directly with the company, and the company enacts a confidentiality clause that's provided by the state. Why, and I'm going to rant here for a while, because I'm frustrated with this. I've spent a lot of time trying to explain this to the newspaper, and they continually don't get it right and don't understand how this works. So the state sent the lead down, goes to the EDC. The EDC works directly with the company. The company enacts a confidentiality clause that's provided by state statute, not the county. And the reason why there's a confidentiality clause is because you can imagine, if you have a company that has 200 employees, and you decide, you know what, I want to relocate from California or New York or whatever, for whatever reason you want to relocate your private business, if your employees caught wind that you were looking around to move your company, most of them would start quitting, looking for other jobs, they would leave your company. That's the purpose of the confidentiality clause, whether you like it or not. And that confidentiality clause is there while they're looking around trying to get a potential deal. Once they get a deal, they are, that is lifted. And before the deal comes back to us, that was lifted, and we found out who the company was. And they do that because while you're looking around, as I mentioned, you don't want your current company to know, because people will start quitting. And also, that's why it gets lifted after people start moving forward with a deal, once they get a little bit more serious and go to the next step. Now, the question of, so first of all, we didn't know the name of the company. It was presented to us as Project Sunshine because of that confidentiality clause. The second thing is, is the second part of that claim, that we voted to give $825,000, and I saw these, like, very clever petitions that are put out there, and anyone that signs them, if you actually read the petition and understand what's going on, probably half of it is just completely inaccurate, that has nothing to do with this issue, because they start talking about previous deals before I was on the commission that were a disaster. But since those deals happened, the county commission has fixed the process. So when you say that we voted to give Rumble $825,000, I've already taken care of the name. We didn't know the name. The second part of it, giving $825,000, the way the program works, and I know this is long and this is frustrating, and you're probably tired of hearing from me, but this is why I wish, this is why, no, it's fine, there's word people, I can.
No, we're going to stay silent when these, some portion that I can get to, these 25 cards, when you're up here speaking.
So.
I'm not done. And I will pause this meeting if you start shouting out. This is not a high school pep rally. Commissioner Ziegler, please continue.
Yeah, so voted to give $825,000 to Rumble. Again, we didn't know the name until after the initial vote happened, which I'll explain what that vote actually was in a second. To give $825,000, the way the program actually works is that the proper word is "up to" $825,000. That's a key part here. The Herald Tribune didn't report that, and the people pushing this issue don't mention that. What, why is "up to" such an important phrase in that statement? Because "up to" means that they have to qualify for it. So the way the incentive program works, and I don't know if there's anyone on this commission, I mean, I just, we're on an amendment to kill the incentive program. That doesn't like the incentive program more than I do. But the reason why "up to" is important is because the only time the county pays out is once a job is created and verified. It's after the fact that a job's created. If Rumble was to come into town and create no jobs, it would be, that up to $825,000 would actually be zero, even though the Herald Tribune and a lot of the petition language and some of the activists go out there and say that we voted to give them $825,000. Usually, when you say you give someone money, that literally means that you gave them money and handed it over. This is actually a rebate program, basically. You have to create the jobs, then you get the money. I still don't like it. I think it's kind of a silly program. That's why I just made that amendment. So we didn't know the name. We didn't vote to give them up to $825,000. Here is what the vote actually was, and this is why I'm so frustrated with this motion that was made today in response to false reporting and false political outcry, is we were presented with a deal, and here's how it was laid out, because there's some misinformation out there as well on this. The EDC came and met with every individual commissioner. I'm assuming everyone took meetings with them. I know I did. And they sat down, they said, look, we have Project Sunshine. Project Sunshine, like, what company is it? Well, we can't tell you. It's confidentiality clause, which I already explained. Project Sunshine is a tech-based company that wants to move to Longboat Key for their U.S. headquarters. They are in the tech industry, and I'm going to lay out exactly what I was told. They're in the tech industry. They are a content curator platform, which I'm thinking like TikTok or one of these platforms, right? They're a content creator platform, and they're interested in moving here particularly because we have Ringling College, and we have access to a lot of individuals at Ringling College that create content. We're one of the best art and design schools in the country. They have a digital program as well, I believe, and they definitely have a video program there. And Project Sunshine is offering to move to Longboat Key, set up their U.S. headquarters, create 165 jobs, 41 jobs at an average of $170,000 per year, 124 jobs at an average of $80,000 per year. What do you guys think? Do you want to look into this? That was the question. And frankly, that was the vote that we took, was they came to us and said, Project Sunshine, tech-based company, wants to move to Longboat Key, going to create 165 jobs, 41 jobs at 170,000, 124 jobs at 80,000. That's the proposal that came before us. So then what happens? We voted as a commission to say, sure, we'll look at it. I mean, the reason why we were excited about it from this dais was the fact that these are going to create jobs, that are going to create, that are going to provide $170,000 a year job, $80,000 per year jobs on average as well in Sarasota County. We have a housing crisis. We have an affordable housing crisis here. The easiest way to get out of the housing crisis is two ways. Either create more homes and increase the supply, which a lot of the people that complain about affordable housing don't want to see and don't want to do, or you have higher-paying jobs so you can afford the housing in the area. These are super-high-paying jobs that were presented to us. So that's how it was presented to us.
Commissioner Ziegler, I'm going to ask you if I can get some other commissioners up on the.
Yeah, so that's how it worked, right? Now, here's what happened, is once the name came out after we voted to move forward with that proposal, hey, bring us back a proposal, and we also added a stipulation, I think it was Commissioner Moran that mentioned, hey, these employees should definitely live locally, and I agree with that. We don't want to be paying for jobs that are created in other areas. Then our staff has gone back and tried to work out a deal, and that deal hasn't been able to get done. So that deal's still in limbo, and now we're voting today to kill it before they even come back with a deal with us to review and before us doing research.
Let's have Commissioner Moran follow up with some comments.
Diego.
And then Commissioner Cutzinger.
Well, Commissioner Ziegler, I'm listening, and I'm going to listen a lot here. I want to hear what others have to say as well. But speaking specifically to this amended motion, but it really does leak over into the main motion, is I don't think it's been any surprise to this community. I've been a, it's fair to say I've been a critic of the EDC. All you've got to do is Google it. I've been more than aggressive on how I feel that we've missed the mark on this for years and years and years. Frankly, one of the reasons I ran for this seat was my dealings with the EDC before I was ever sitting in this chair. But I think it's important to note today, and I appreciate, Chair Mayo, you did a great summary of this, but can't be ignored. is the EDC is a completely separate entity of this board. They have their own Board of Directors and they have their own Executive Director. The relationship with our community is that there is an LBT tax which funds them. But it can't be ignored, they are a completely separate entity, completely separate board, completely separate Executive Director. The reason I seconded this is, um, I could not have been more vocal and I could not have been more detailed, including Excel spreadsheets, of giving thoughts to the EDC, of being incredibly specific on what types of businesses we are to attract in this community. I went as far as giving NACs codes and SIC codes, um, size of companies, and they were very much related around marine science, which wraps around for the obvious nature of our location, but very specifically to multi-marine aquarium, and the layering of tier-one, tier-two suppliers related to marine science, and the other one was sports medicine. Sports therapies related to regionally IMG Academy, and of course, the fabulous, um, programs that we've done here with professional sports arenas and such. Is that I could not have been more specific of a laser beam approach of who, if you're going to use taxpayer dollars to attract someone to this community, is that it needs to be crystal clear of who you're attracting. And again, couldn't have been any more specific. Frankly, without taking up too much oxygen in the room, it was met with, um, an unfavorable response, let's say. And I tried to make it clear that, what's the old saying, is that if you're not on a clear path, any path will do? Well, that's got us sitting here today, if you ask me. So, um, I'm not interested in the past and going forward, I am not interested in anything further unless we start addressing the root core discussion with the EDC that I've been, as Commissioner Dieter says, I've been howling at the moon for years. And today is a perfect example, is we need to be on a clear path or my, I just can't see myself supporting anything related to this unclear mission. So, thank you for the time, Chair.
Commissioner Kutsinger, then Commissioner Dieter.
Yeah, speaking to your amended motion, I would support that. I would, what I would support, along with what Commissioner Moran spoke to, is, you know, reviewing the whole incentive program, deciding whether or not it's something we want to continue, or do we want to very specifically deal with it in a way that says there are these very clear targeted jobs, industries that we're looking to bring here and making sure that we understand that. So I think, you know, this gives us an opportunity to bring that issue up and I would support a complete review of the whole incentive program and deciding whether or not we even need to go forward with that at all.
And just before Commissioner Dieter, just the narrow context of, are you, was your motion to review the incentive program?
No, and it was to end the incentive program and the reason why, I mean, it, very similar to this, the original, uh, motion is, I mean, we're cutting off time to review the deal that would come back from Rumble, so I don't see why it would, it would be an issue for us not to rush and, and vote to end the incentive program either. So it's actually a motion to end the incentive program, not to review.
All right, and Commissioner Dieter, and then we'll vote on the amendment and then go to the parent motion after that. Commissioner Dieter.
Great, and I'm glad we're finally addressing the amendment to the motion. And the amendment is to end incentives and that's a whole big, long, longer conversation than we should have as an impromptu at-the-board-table conversation. I think that Commissioner Ziegler was very eloquent and he was 100% accurate in his description of the process. I hope that people now understand that the headline is nice in a paper, but the devil's in the details and it's more complicated and nobody ever wants to sit through the details, but these are the details of, of the incident and the proposition. So I will still consider this an unfriendly amendment because it ends all incentives just right here, right now. We have already cut back the EDC's money, they have very little left. And one of the reasons I made the motion, the only thing that Commissioner Ziegler was incorrect about is, I've been doing this for 25 years and I think I have a history of not caving in to pressure, not caving in because you brought 10 people to the meeting, not caving in because the newspaper doesn't like it because the newspaper can do an editorial one day and three days later change their mind and if you voted according to what the newspaper said, you would have no political career. So I just don't cave into those kind of things. Okay? This particular project, with the reduced funding given to the EDC, this project was looked at by staff, we can't prove where the employees would come from, it's remote work. And I just think that lots of people want to move their companies to Sarasota County and we're in the position to pick the cream of the crop and what's best for our full-time residents, not people that you promised to bring here or people that we can't prove where they live while they're working on the internet. So I would, I would not support, first of all, I do not support the amendment and then we can deal with the main motion.
All right, I'm gonna call a question now, but we're gonna, I'm gonna ask again. You have a sign, you want to lean against the wall, fine. The rest of you, please take a seat, as I look back there, three of the four doors are blocked. Please take a seat and the gentleman under the clock, could you help me out? There you go. All right, we have a, we have an amendment to the main motion to end, uh, the incentive program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed to the amendment to end, uh, signify no. Chair votes no, however, the amendment to the main motion passes three to two with Dieter and Mayo voting no. Now, that is done, until and unless it gets brought back up, but it is now done and we're voting on the parent motion made by Commissioner Dieter and seconded by Commissioner Kutsinger. All those in favor?
No, I, we have debate on that.
Oh, I'm so sorry, you're right, you're right, I got thrown off. Okay, that's Commissioner Dieter first and then Commissioner Kutsinger, I think you both said no, but, and I think you spoke also, but go right ahead if you have something else.
Yeah, so I discussed the process earlier, now I'm gonna discuss why I'm not gonna support this amendment. This is... What's that? Or, sorry, discuss this motion, we already made the amendment. I'm okay with discussing and ending the incentive program and discussing the process there and adjusting that process and as we just voted to end it with the amendment.
Everybody, excuse me, I am so sorry, Commissioner Ziegler, you are just really strongly making a great case for your position. Everybody, sit down, now two of the four doors are blocked, please. Fires happen in the strangest places.
I didn't like the confidentiality clause, I actually mentioned that during the process. I didn't like, um, uh, the headlines and the false narratives that were pushed out there, that's fine. But when we're looking at this, now we're starting to dive into a business and we're starting to basically litigate what businesses can and can't do. And with the false information out there, which has not been accurately reported or spread to the public, that draws us great concern, the fact that they're on other platforms, but this platform's been singled out and to drive a political narrative. This is, uh, a form of cancel culture, that's what we're voting on here, that's what's prompting this action. And again, I do not like Russia, I think they're our enemy, they're not our friend. I sympathize with the people of Ukraine, uh, but, you know, here in America, I mean, we, the same people that are screaming about Rumble are the same people that, you know, think that you should burn flags and all this other stuff, which is actually protected, um, in America and shouldn't be.
Okay.
Easy, easy, you guys, you guys will get your turn to come up here and tell me why I'm wrong.
Commissioner Ziegler, if you...
But, I'll get there, I'll get there, so...
Slow down, everybody. Next time we have that outburst, it's real simple. I'm delicately gonna tap the gavel and we're gonna take a break of anywhere from two minutes to longer. Commissioner Ziegler.
So, here's my issue, is we have this draft agreement that's out there floating that may not even get done, may not even come back to us, maybe it does, maybe it comes back even better than what we initially outlined and we just don't know. I've heard from a lot of people in town, now again, I'm in my 30s, a little bit different perspective than other people that may be a little bit older and not engage with people in their 20s, 30s. But I've heard from a lot of people in their 20s and 30s that they want access to high-paying jobs that Rumble is promising to bring here. And again, we don't pay out until they create those jobs. I have heard from people on Longboat Key that are very excited to have a US headquarters on Longboat Key. And I don't know if they come here or not, depending on what happens with this, I'm not sure. But we sit up here and we talk about that we need to move into the tech space. Frankly, moving away from some of these deals that we've done with people that are in the developer, you know, industry and all of that building industry and we want to diversify our economy. And if you look on the paper, it is a great deal. I heard from someone that previously was in a leadership role at the Herald Tribune and they actually admitted to me, they said, "To be honest, Christian, if you didn't do a deal with them, I would be upset instead of doing a deal with them because it would look like you're not doing a deal simply because of politics." And that's what this feels like, we are reacting to false narratives and headlines, which I laid out, and we're taking action, impromptu action, rather than letting the process play out and letting that agreement come back to us. And then at that point, once we have an agreement to review, we can vote it down. That's how the process works. We can vote it down, but we're rushing because of outcry created by false information and it's, it's just not the way we should be doing business here. It doesn't mean that I support the deal because literally there's been no deal to review yet. It means that I don't support cutting off the process for us to review something and then have a fair opportunity to vote for or against it. So I will not be supporting this, this motion. I'm frustrated that it was brought up because this is not normally how we do business at the county commission and I've been chastised in the past for bringing up issues so quick. And that's what it seems like's happening here, is we're legislating on the fly rather than getting with staff and having meetings and talking to the EDC and even potentially maybe talking to the company. We're rushing to do something and if that's a change in protocol, um, I'd appreciate notice on it because again, I've been chastised in the past for doing exactly what's happening here. And again, lastly, nothing that we're discussing here, my issue, I don't... Ukraine, Russia, Rumble, Facebook, Twitter, it's a process issue and we would have an opportunity to vote against this later, which I may entertain simply because I don't support the incentive program, which we just voted to end anyway. So I will be voting no on this motion. I appreciate everyone's concerns and support of Ukraine, for those that are honestly mean it. Those people, they need our assistance, they need our help and our support. And Russia is not our friend, I can't stress that enough. But, uh, yeah, I appreciate you guys listening to me, I'm sorry for rambling so much, I'll try to be quiet the rest of the...
You're absolutely fine, Commissioner, Commissioner Ziegler. Commissioner Dieter, you're back on the board and then we're gonna vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Chairman, I appreciate your patience in having this full discussion. But since the amendment to the motion just passed, canceling all incentives, it makes the main amendment a moot point, I think, because our only involvement as a public-private partnership with EDC is that we're the ones that offer the incentives. So if that no longer exists, then we don't really probably even need a motion.
All right.
I would like to turn to either Jonathan on that or...
Let me, let me do the direct, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
You make an excellent, excellent point. At this point, we had an amendment which survived because it was an amending, a motion that was on the floor. Now, if, Rick, if Commissioner Dieter withdraws her motion and Commissioner Kutsinger withdraws his second, that is the main motion, does the amended motion still have standing? I would think not.
It would not, it would be an amended motion to the, to a motion that had been withdrawn. It could be renewed as its own motion, but it would not have standing as, as an amendment to a motion that was withdrawn.
Okay, with that, with that said, Commissioner Dieter, um, you do as you please, we'll be starting all over again. Do you still want to withdraw your motion?
But that, that's not exactly my question, I think that's a lovely idea. But my question is, um, if we just canceled incent, incentives, we would no longer be a participant in the Rumble contract because it called for some, so basically it makes it a moot point. And Rumble can come here or not come here, they just would be coming here without any help from us.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ziegler.
So what you could do is if this was withdrawn, we would have to do a new standalone motion to vote on just the incentive portion.
Correct, correct.
Rather than dealing with the specific topic. Now, I don't know how you withdraw a motion after the amendment has been approved. How do you do, how would you do that?
Rick, is it as simple or not as Commissioner Dieter withdrawing her motion and Commissioner Kutsinger withdrawing his second? And then I would look to Commissioner Ziegler for a new main motion which would mimic his amendment?
That's correct, the maker and the person who seconded the motion can withdraw the motion.
Okay, so, let's, let's cut...
And then if I don't withdraw the motion?
If you don't withdraw the motion, then the board would vote on the motion with the amendment. And I, I think I understand your point, Commissioner Dieter, is that the amendment really is included or would, would take over the necessity of the original motion, but that's, it could still be voted on together. And if it was approved, both portions would be approved and, and that would be resolved in that matter.
Rick, Rick, let me, let me, let me just ask a couple of questions. If there is no withdrawal of the main motion and the main motion survives with a yes vote, it has attached to it Commissioner Ziegler's amended motion, which got a 3-2 vote, yes?
Correct, the, the motion that would be voted on by the board at this time would be the motion by Commissioner Dieter as amended by Commissioner Ziegler.
I'm gonna stick with that, Mr. Chair, I'm not gonna remove my main motion.
Okay, with that said, with that said, let's vote on the main motion, remembering...
As amended.
That's what I was just gonna say, thank you guys. So, we have the motion on the floor, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Anyone else? Okay, and those that are opposed to the main motion?
No.
Chair votes aye and is on the losing side, that motion fails with Commissioners Dieter and Mayo in supporting it. However, it, Rick, give me some guidance here, it fails, but what does that do to the second, to the amended motion that was attached to it?
We were both voted down by the board together, so there was no pending motion at this time.
Okay, now, am I free to ask for a new motion that mimics the second, the amended motion that we just had?
Correct, you were able to do that.
So what I'm actually gonna do is I'm gonna make a motion that we bring up at the next meeting that we end the economic incentive program for the same reasons I was frustrated that the previous motion was made on the fly. I don't necessarily want to do that right now. What I want to do is give us some time so we can talk to the EDC, but let's bring this back at our next meeting in two weeks or whenever our next meeting is and let's have a discussion and a vote to potentially end the economic incentive program in Sarasota County.
Okay, I'm gonna second that because I'm getting a little bored not being allowed to talk since I'm supposed to speak last. So we have a motion by Commissioner Ziegler, a second by myself. Commissioner Ziegler, you go first and at this time I am gonna go second.
No, I think I've talked enough, I guess the only thing I want to do is...
No, no, you haven't, you haven't. No, you haven't. You haven't. Take another hour.
So we'll review this, discuss this. We'll have meetings before, and then we'll address it then.
Okay. And first of all, we will be put on the agenda for the next meeting. It was not... Okay, I'll take it on the chin. It was done on the fly. But that's my prerogative as chair, to bring up a topic that we're having a lot of attention to. I've never done it before, but I'm glad I did it, because we got a lot of stuff aired out. Anybody else? Oh, boy. Okay, we have Commissioner Dieter.
Just a quick one. If we're going to do that and vote on this, then we should at least invite the EDC that we're sitting here eliminating, basically. We should at least invite them to the next meeting, where this will be part of the discussion.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But it will be a discussion item, I believe. And I think that's the purpose of waiting two weeks to have a discussion, is to involve the EDC. I do know that their feedback has been to me, that they don't even like the incentive program either, because a lot more headaches than they deal with, is what I've been told at points by them. So I don't think this eliminates the EDC. It just eliminates this $5,000 program that I don't think really helps bring jobs here too much, anyway. All right. With that, Commissioner Moran. I'm so sorry.
No, thank you. I pushed my button. When Commissioner Ziegler, I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on that, so it's not any headlines on that. This is not a vote to get rid of the EDC. This is going to be a discussion, that the EDC can still exist. The question is whether we're going to use taxpayer dollars to fund it. Those are very clear lines to me. I'm not suggesting the EDC's not valuable. The discussion is whether taxpayer money should be used to support it. But I got your point, Commissioner Dieter. But yeah, I just want to make sure it's a discussion related to all of that, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. With that, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. That motion passes unanimously. I have a couple of things that I want to say to this group at this point. First of all, if you're here for items 42, 43, or 44, the discussion items, we don't take public. So you have to speak to us in the three-minute slots and open to the public. You open to the public. We're probably up to 25 cards. I will invoke the clause. So let me read the whole open-to-the-public protocol. "This time is reserved for persons desiring to comment before the board on items not scheduled for a public hearing. Persons wishing to speak at open to the public shall complete a request to speak card, including the number of the agenda item, or if not an agenda item, the topic to be discussed. Comments on scheduled agenda items will be heard first, followed by up to five speakers related to topics not on the advertised agenda. Any remaining speaker cards will be held for the final open to the public at the end of the meeting." I hope everybody understands that. And we are going to come back after a short break and start rolling through the cards after I sit here with staff and figure out which bucket to put them in. But with that, we're taking a break. Okay, we're back. Sorry, buddy.
That's okay.
Mr. Costantino.
For the hundreds of times I've spoken with you, Costantino, not Constantino, C-O-S. For the record, Mike Costantino, I'd like to start off by mentioning and apologizing to Mr. Tom Shofsky for the board's forgetting to mention that on March 29th of 1973, our final combat troops left Vietnam. And from the 2017 Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act, we just kind of skipped past that one this morning. And so, thank you for your service and to all those that served in Vietnam, sir. Thank you very much. I'll tell you, I was very disturbed, and you know that I'm often disturbed when I sit before this board. And I felt like I was back at the Charter Review Board again, where you guys just don't seem to understand parliamentary procedure and the very procedures. When you look at this agenda, Agenda Item 1 is open to the public. And for you guys to go completely outside of that and take an hour of our time pontificating is extremely offensive and insulting. And the reason, I'll tell you, with this five speakers that you just bring up, I will remind you that on November 24th of 2018, I came and had about 40 people with signs back here, because we were saying, hey, why are you spending our tax dollars to have the county attorney overturn, what, 73% of us just voted on, which is basically permanent protections for the lands that you bought with our money for the park program? And so the result of that meeting that day was you cutting down the open to public to just five. So all today's generosity was, was giving us back something that you have taken away. And I really feel that for all of these people with Ukraine, this what you see right here is the slippery slope that leads towards that. And to listen to you guys up here pontificate and basically lecture us like we're a bunch of little kids is absolutely disgraceful. And I got to tell you, especially Mr. Ziegler, for you to go off on this rant, this is not an agenda item. There's no basis to take a motion and take a vote. Now, to throw you a little bit of bone, you're absolutely right. Incentivizing someone to come here and promote Russian propaganda is absolutely despicable, disgraceful. And to take our public funds to support the Chamber of Commerce to have a parking lot, it's ridiculous. Let business survive on its own. Let us come out there in a free market and battle it out and see what happens. Don't spend our tax money to support C.S.K. businesses. Don't spend our tax money to support Russian propaganda. And please make a huge change and give the voting citizens the respect they deserve, and stop insulting us.
Ms. Lucas.
Thank you. My name is Adrienne Lucas, and I live in Southgate, Sarasota. I'm here to deliver signatures, 1,656 as of this morning, gathered from change.org and I petitions, along with paper petition signatures that were gathered this week and by concerned Sarasota citizens with ties to Ukraine, who are asking the board and the EDC to drop all future potential plans with Rumble. And we are here today to tell you that free speech on a streaming platform is not free if the taxpayers of Sarasota have to fit the bill. And Christian Ziegler, I have to tell you that your direct implication that I am a flag burner, or the people that have signed this signature, is a gross, gross misrepresentation of Americans, and I don't appreciate it. You and I are both American, and we both clearly feel the same way about Ukraine. And I don't care about Rumble coming here. If they want to be on Long Boat Key in that little palace, that's fine, but not on our dime. I happen to agree with both you and Commissioner Moran that the EDC should be retired. However, Commissioner Moran, I like your ideas as far as who they should be inviting into our town. This is not a place that we need to give, you know, corporate welfare to. This is a great place. Everybody wants to be here. I also want to say that, you know, Christian Ziegler, you enthusiastically, at a prior board meeting about Project Sunshine, you know, spewed on about how Project Sunshine can be used to introduce curriculum into the Sarasota school system, and that you had an in with a certain school board member. Yeah. Well, I see that as a conflict of interest. So I think you should recuse yourself, period. And you go on and on about social media and how you know this and you know that. You know what? I'm not that much older than you. And for all those people that are clamoring to you, saying that they want Rumble, well, then tell them to write you a letter, because I want to see it when I make a public request for your email, okay? Because you always do this hearsay, they-say kind of stuff. It means nothing. It means nothing. It means you made it up, okay? Finally, what I also want to say, because I have enough time, is that all of you commissioners, the four of you are complicit in your silence about Commissioner Ziegler's attendance at the January 6th insurrection. Yeah, I'm going to bring it up again, because those people, you know, you stroke them and they followed. And here you sit, you know? Here you sit, and you show no shame. And this is a platform, you know, Rumble is a platform that hosts all of the luminaries that you so want to be with. I see you climbing up that ladder of success.
Ms. Lucas, I'm going to stop the clock. You know, I used to be bolted to the podium there, probably in remodeling. It's gone. Why don't you just look at me, state your case?
I just did. Here are the petitions. Thank you for your time, Commissioner Mayo. I appreciate what you did this morning. It's an attempt, but you know what? You're still kicking Rumble around like a hot potato. Deal with it.
Okay, Ms. Antunes.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to remind our speakers of our civility clause, and personal attacks are not welcome? If you want to make a statement, you're free to say whatever's on your mind.
He attacked me.
But to stand there and call people out by name and attack them personally, I don't think we should have to sit through that.
I haven't sit through that.
Ms. Antunes.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity here. I was moved this weekend to see our president give a speech to the Polish people and Ukrainian refugees. I watched President Reagan give a speech. But I watched Pope John Paul II talk to the Polish people about not being afraid, about resisting Soviet oppression. And many of us here grew up understanding the Cold War and watching, in 1989, the wall come down. That message, I appreciate, Commissioner Dieter, you talking about how, isn't it nice? There's something we can all agree on. I do take great issue with the notion that somebody who was fomenting a "stop the steal" message campaign in the fall can be complaining about fake news. That is a big mistake. Rumble was bad enough in October. Rumble is a platform hosting insurrectionists like Steve Bannon and Mike Flynn. It is an anti-vaccine platform. This has to do with human life. It actually directs people toward misinformation about COVID-19. And many people have lost, myself included, loved ones, from COVID. So the misinformation there is reprehensible. I view this, and I think a lot of people understand, and I may not be in my 30s anymore, but I am using social media all the time. And there is a conflict with one of the members. Rumble can be seen as something that could benefit someone's personal business network here on the commission. And I think you need to look at that. I think recusal for Commissioner Ziegler would be appropriate. But there's a dangerous partisan agenda. It's being recognized nationally regarding Rumble. And with freedom comes responsibility. You don't get to say whatever you want, wherever you want. That's not freedom of speech. That is self-indulgent and dangerous attitude toward freedom of speech. We all take responsibility with our freedoms, and that has to be the case here. Finally, please don't hide behind the EDC. This commission is absolutely responsible for every dollar that is awarded. And finally, you have to advertise this, so people in the community can come out. I appreciate you wanting to address what people care about. But this should be rescinded immediately. Thank you.
Why don't you tell us your name, because I have messed that up?
Hello. My name, Andriy Mularshuk. I am originally from Ukraine. 15 years I'm living here. And what I came here to say, it's about, I heard about Rumble. And I know what is mean propaganda, because like, we have relatives in Ukrainians, we have relatives in Russia. And when in 2014, my cousins who live in Moscow, we grew up together in villages. We eat from the same table, kids together. And when 2014 was killings people by Russians, and they take crime, Crimea Island, I told that to sisters, and they didn't believe me, because propaganda works in that country. They don't believe relatives. They don't believe people who lives in Ukraine. They believe in television. And the same happens when was invasion to Ukraine, first hours of invasion. My parents live in very small town. It's like 15,000 people population. But we had their military base. And first rockets, Russians was hit at my town. And when I again write to my cousins in Moscow, say about that, they didn't believe me. They say, no, it's probably you guys kill each other there, because it works propaganda. So my point, if it's even 1% of propaganda in that company, they will use it for 99%. And Russians, they never keep commitments. They never follow promises. And they always take advantage with another people and countries like mine. They just killing. And they use propaganda, and everyone listening to them don't believe even close relatives. So I hope you guys have wisdom, and God give wisdom to United States to make right decisions. And thank you for your support, Ukraine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We took 22 or 23 cards. The rest of the cards, we're going to have to take at the end of the day. But we are far from done. So if somebody has to peel off, they should peel off.
I got about 12...
Screaming kids.
Eight-year-old girls waiting for me to coach them right now.
You go do that, and we're going to round this up. And I see you, Mr. Grossman. I haven't forgotten you, okay? We have 10 cards left over from this morning, and then Mr. Grossman. But the first one, Carol Heckert, has said she won't be here, but she sent an email to all of us. Sidji Maurice, Julie London, Christine Hervig, H-E-R-V-I-G, Tom Machulow, Louise, I think it is, Machinist, Johann Werner, Bodan Futey, F-U-T-E-Y, Andrew Futey, F-U-T-E-Y. These are all the cards that we didn't have time for this morning. Lisa Schur. Lisa, golly, I've been staring at you for four hours.
I'm sorry.
I'm saying, what is this lady doing here? Lisa, you got three minutes. The vice-chair is running the clock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Lisa Schur. I'm a resident of Sarasota. And just by way of background, I lived and worked in Russia in the former Soviet Union for 20 years. I'm an American citizen. I came back to the United States in 2011 and decided to settle in Sarasota. And the reason I've been sitting here for nine hours today and was out front with a sign, is that I feel very, very strongly about this issue. I'm very firmly opposed to my tax dollars being used to fund Rumble, which is willing to give a platform to RT, Russia Today, and the Putin regime. Mr. Ziegler has had to leave, unfortunately, but he made a comparison between Rumble giving a platform to RT and Facebook and Twitter giving a platform to RT. I would say that that was a bit of a disingenuous argument, because my tax dollars are not funding Facebook or Twitter. So there's a big, big difference in my mind. Why do I think that this is wrong? Well, I was there in '91 when we had the first coup. I was there in '93 when we had the second attempted coup. And I've seen how things work there. I've seen the propaganda. I'm just going to tell you a little story. A couple of weeks ago, I made a phone call to friends in Russia. They were like my family. I met them when I lived and worked in Kazakhstan. I brought them back with me when I moved back to Russia. I've been back and forth to Russia about five times. And I called them up, and we're catching up. And, you know, we both shared births, deaths, marriages, you name it. And we're having a nice chat, because it's been a while. And I say something to him about, gosh, did you see that? That was terrible, about that bombing of the maternity hospital. And he's like, there wasn't any bombing. I'm like, what do you mean? He goes, that was all propaganda. That was an actor. So if you have any doubt about the Russian propaganda machine, put that out of your mind. What Putin is doing is just wrong. And I do not want to see my tax dollars going to support that. Thank you very much.
Ruda Janari, is that you?
Yeah, Julie London.
Okay, I'm so sorry. You're Julie London. I... Okay. I'm so sorry. You're Julie London. I went right by you. Why don't you come up? My mistake. My mistake. And then, Mr. Grossman, finally, I've seen you bounce in and out of that back door for three hours. You're going to be next. Go ahead, Julie.
First, I want to say what a great job the recording secretary is doing, just phenomenal. And the deputy in the back is one of the bravest people in this room, so thank you for keeping us all safe. Legendary Nancy Dieter, it is an honor and a privilege to speak before you. You are awesome. Mr. Mayo, on behalf of seniors, thank you for the professional and human warmth you exhibited to an 89-year-old this morning. Just wonderful. I want to start by clarifying something that 30-something-year-old Christian Ziegler said. Twitter runs disclaimers on possible misinformation. So, does Facebook. Rumble does not. In fact, Rumble claims that it does not promote misinformation or conspiracy theories, but simply has a free speech approach to regulation. According to Wired, and they are rated as center and media bias, they have not only allowed misinformation to thrive on its platform, it has actually actively recommended it. There can be disagreements about what can and cannot be classified as misinformation, so this investigation erred on the side of caution. They said our conclusions are conservative. So, what they're saying is that they send people to misinformation. Christian also spent time clearing up the minutia of the deal between Rumble and the county, but according to MIT, a new study published in Science finds that false news online travels farther, faster, deeper, and more broadly than the truth. Case in point, yesterday, USF reported that Sarasota County approved the 825K incentive to Rumble. In the article, a USF Russian professor declared the site malignant and toxic. Everything, a Rumble video or podcast, whenever they go viral, the false news will be accompanied by Sarasota gave them 825K to broadcast their conspiracy theories and propaganda. We will be forever connected to misinformation every time one of these stories go viral. Malignant, toxic, Sarasota's legacy. Finally, economically, business is planning to come to Sarasota. They may have a change of heart when they see the false news that Sarasota gave a half-a-billion-dollar company a financial incentive headed by Chris Pavlosky, whom Market Realist estimates is worth $80 million. They don't want their taxes feeding millionaires, and they'll go somewhere else. And that is the story. All the good work you guys did today, it won't be remembered.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, Mr. Grossman, I probably misplaced your card. You've been here all day. Just do another card, but...
I found it.
Oh, you found it? Okay. She did. All right, buddy.
Larry Grossman, apparently my card is still there. I would like to pick up on Commissioner Moran's points, which I thought were excellent, and that is, if you don't have a policy, you don't have a plan, you don't have a program, and you start off with incentive, you're kind of lost. I mean, you have to go in a certain order. There's companies that focus on, you know, targeting, target industry analysis all over the country. My wife was one of them. She worked for an economic development consulting firm, so this is normal practice. Site and valuation. I mean, this is done all the time all over the place, but this is the, and let me just tell you. So, yeah, that's what you need. You need, you need to know what you're doing. If you don't, don't do it, which I think is the case here. My background, planner for the city of Alexandria, Virginia, and I was in charge of transit-oriented development because we're building metro rail stations for redevelopment. So, I was doing the plan. We had economic development folks independent of the city, and we also had Industrial Development Authority, Alexander Industrial Development Authority. So, how does this all work? We, the economic development program was trying to induce national associations to come in around the metro stations to build buildings and then have people sited there as part of an economic growth program. And so, we used taxes and bonds to induce them to build those buildings, and we attracted like 400 national associations. You ever go list associations, everything you can think of and even things you can't think of as associations are there in some form. We also have the National Science Foundation, which is a nice deal. But we're, you know, we're taking these associations there someplace, and we say, come over to us. And they did because we offered buildings. They could buy real estate, build buildings, taxes and financing, instead of being in DC and having to pay high rents. So, this was a strategy, and that's what I'm talking about, that you need a strategy. And this thing, look, I lived in, on Longboat Key for 10 years. I ran for commission three times, didn't make it, but that's not the point. And, you know, Longboat Key doesn't need this company. You're going to an existing building. It's already there. You're not doing anything. There's no other office around there. Longboat Key is not an office center, if you haven't noticed. So, it's totally misplaced, and so I don't understand why you give incentives to be someplace where they shouldn't be, where there's no, you're not generating anything other than this. I could speak for hours, but thank you.
Thank you, buddy. Thank you for hanging out there. With that, unless anyone, and I kind of dare you, unless anyone has anything else, we are adjourned.